Good evening. We'll go ahead and call to order this evening. And we'll begin with our student-led pledge of allegiance. And tonight, we have students from Lee Summit Elementary, Sage Williams, Ava Lee Happy, and Peyton Fields will be joining us up front to help lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Thank you, and great job. We'll be hearing more from them here in a little bit. Welcome to all of our guests here in the room, as well as watching from home. And board members, I'll ask that we get a motion to adopt our agenda and a second.
I move to adopt the agendas presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. So we will now move on to item 2.01. And Dr. Buck, we'll look to you for your superintendent's report, please.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome, and thank you to the Board of Education for all the time you spend and work you do. Got some highlights here before we get to hear some other highlights from kids. First off, I want to start off, congratulate Mr. Joe Keeney from Lee Summit North Bernard Campbell Middle School. He's an orchestra director, a teacher, and he was named the 2023 recipient of the Distinguished Service Award for the Missouri American String Teachers Association. So congratulations to him. The next have to do with, the two have to do with broadcasting teams. First one at Lee Summit High School, broadcasting team competed in the Student Television Network Fall Nationals Competition, and three teams took home top five finishes, so congratulations to those Tigers. And students from Lee Summit North's broadcast team took first and second place at the Buddies Not Bullies PSA Compassion Contest. So congratulations to both broadcasting teams. Some meaningful, good guess. Mentioned three meaningful engagement series are kind of coming up. So one of them, we're very excited, and I know Mr. McGurk's back here, he had a big part of this. We're so excited to share that the Negro League Baseball Museum is bringing a traveling exhibit to Lee Summit North. It'll be here for four to six weeks, and there will be an open house scheduled for January 24th, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. So January 24th, that's just a few days away, it's five days from now, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. over at Lee Summit North, so we're excited to have that. There are two more weeks to nominate a teacher for the 2023 Lee Summit Chamber of Commerce Excellence and Teacher Teaching Award and Teacher of the Year. And this year, we've added a Support Staff Member Award, so Support Staffer of the Year. Patrons can find those nomination forms on all of our district channels. And last but not least, on February 8th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., we'll be at East Trails Middle School. East Trails Middle School is in the house over here. And we'll be hosting an event, the first time ever, 100 People Who Care. We have over 25, I think it is, nonprofits signed up. Four will be picked randomly, they'll get to present what they do, what they would use money for. And all the individuals who come are going to write a $100 check, and whoever gets the most votes, gets it. So if exactly 100 people come, one nonprofit will walk away with $10,000 that night. But all the nonprofits present can share information, we'll have tables that set up. And to throw it in, if you've never seen East Trails, maybe I can convince Whitney over there to help me give a little tour of their newest beautiful building. So, thank you. That's all I have tonight?
All right, thank you, Dr. Buck. We'll now move to item 3.01 and have our first school spotlight this evening with Lee Summit Elementary. We have Ms. Tracy Sanders, Lee Summit Elementary Principal.
We have a mic, you can stay in the middle.
And she'll introduce the students and tell us about their club opportunities.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate you all having us here tonight. We are going to talk to you all about clubs and how this came to be. So this is part of our dignity and belonging plan that we spent a lot of time digging into last year, and we actually presented to the board last spring. We have been deep into our diversity training at LSE for years and years. And so what we learned, actually part of dignity and belonging, was empathy interviews, which we had never done before. And so last year, we did empathy interviews, actually with our students and our staff. And as part of our empathy interviews, we learned that our students wanted more opportunities to participate in activities during the school day. Because after school or before school, there were too many barriers, and our students just weren't able to do that. And so our leadership team dug into, how could we, how could we do that? How could we get it into the school day? And so we did. We actually built our entire master plan around getting clubs every week during the school day. And so clubs came to be. Every Friday from 3:15 until 4 o'clock, our students participate in clubs. Kindergarten through second grade are activity-based clubs, there are eight of them. Third through fifth grade is service-based clubs, and there are nine of them. They get to choose. We don't tell them, they get to choose. All of our staff also participate, with the exception of myself and our nurse, and remaining the office. And so 100% of our staff, 100% of our students are now participating in, are in clubs. I know you don't want to hear from me, so the first person you're going to hear from is actually one of our non-certified staff members, Mrs. Nasworthy. And we picked her because she has the most coveted club in the building. Everyone wants to be in her club.
Good evening. I'm Denise Nasworthy, and I'm the Administrative Assistant at Lee Summit Elementary. And I'm one of the facilitators of the quilting club. This club is special to me. This is special to me because quilting is something I'm passionate about. We are learning to make some awesome things and also learning some important life skills in the process, I hope. I'm particularly proud to be participating in Lee Summit Elementary's club program because typically, front office staff are not able to take part in activities during the day. We're answering the phone and doing all that good stuff. Our school nurse and our principal, every Friday come and cover the office so our attendance secretary and I can work with students in clubs. Every single staff member participates in clubs, and it's building some awesome relationships. It's an amazing opportunity for all of us, and I'm very, very thankful for it. I'm going to pass it on to Ava, and she's got something.
Hi, my name is Ava Lee Happy, and I'm a fifth grader at LSE. I have gone to LSE since fourth grade, and I'm also a member of a quilting club. This club has given me a sense of belonging because we have gotten to know each other more and be a true part of something at club time. I have also learned how to do something I didn't know before. I'm really good at the project. I am also helping the, those who aren't as good, and I'm helping others.
Hello, my name is Peyton Fields. I'm a fifth grader at LSE. I've gone to LSE since kindergarten, and I serve on the student green team. This club has given me a sense of belonging because I've gotten to know more students from other grades. I'm really excited about starting the spring planting in the gardens that we're building for the community. We have really, we have already started planting the gardens. Having clubs during the school day has helped me be able to participate in more things. If clubs were after, after, before school, I'm not sure I'd have been able to participate because I have a lot of other things to do. I feel like, I feel like a lot of the students would not have been able to come to clubs because they have other activities as well, or their parents just couldn't transport them. The thing I like most about club time is interacting with other students, getting to collaborate about what we might change, and just having fun. I wouldn't really change anything about clubs, I really like the way we do them.
Hi, my name is Sage Williams. I am a third grader at LSE. I have gone to LSE since I was in kindergarten. This club has given me a sense of belonging because before I felt like an outcast. I feel like my club members support me and I, and know more about me. I am lucky because I go to Kids Country, so I would get to participate if it was before or after school. But I would not get to be with all the same people because many of them would not get to participate. We talk about things that matter, for example, our feelings and how we can help others feel as if they belong. And if I could change anything about club time, I would have clubs 24/7. And I am in Diversity Club. And I am in Diversity Club.
So the thing that I want to say is, I want to say thank you, actually. I want to say thank you to our school board for allowing us to continue our training in diversity and belonging. And I want to say thank you to Shelley Sanders, who's really pushed us to dig deeper. She knew that our building was a little further along than other buildings, and she still helped our team to push harder. She helped us to push harder into the empathy interviews, which we dug deep into, and helped us to make a plan that we didn't stretch out for multiple years, but we implemented. We just wrote the plan last spring, and then we implemented it this school year. So thank you for the funding, too, because when you run that many clubs, you need materials. And so she actually pushed so that we had funding to fund the club so that we could have things, all of the material, that's one of our most expensive clubs to make, but our kids got to keep their quilts. So now the thing that they're doing is they're making, they learned to braid, so they're making dog toys that they're donating to the animal shelters, and then they're making dog beds, that's their next big thing that they're doing. So thank you. Thank you, school board. Thank you, Shelley Sanders, for pushing us.
Thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing. Thank you. Fantastic. All right, so now we'll move to our next school spotlight, item 3.02, with our East Trails Middle School. Dr. Whitney Morehead will spotlight East Trails Middle School. And our students are Sarah Fernandez, Will Butler, Ava Palmer, and Jamison Ross. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much for having us this evening. We've been doing some amazing work at East Trails, but tonight, we really wanted to highlight our real-world learning and really showcase how it has helped our curriculum come alive and help create more authentic learning experiences for our students. So I have a few Bison with me here tonight who will introduce themselves and share a little bit about East Trails and our career exploration.
My name is Will. I'm an eighth grader at East Trails. And for my broadcasting class, we got to go to a university and see their broadcasting production they had going on. And it was just really cool to get to see how a real job is at a broadcasting place would really get to work. And it was just a really cool experience and engaging in learning.
Hi, I'm Ava, and I'm in seventh grade at East Trails. We did a real-world math activity, it was really, really fun. We also got to go on a strings field trip that showed us how to, how they make instruments. They also told us about how colleges and bosses and stuff, they're not looking for, can you take this test? Do you know the facts? They're looking for your creativity.
Hi, I'm Sarah, and I'm an eighth grader at ETMS. I had a client-type experience where we got to paint window, windows in downtown Lee Summit. The owner talked to us about running a business and how she wanted the windows to be designed so she could still showcase her products. It was a team-building experience, and we all had to help each other to complete everything. It felt like a real business opportunity.
Thank you so much. We have a short video for you that will also feature our students and their experiences.
It's really easy to walk in and say, oh, this is the, you know, the new fancy school. This is the new space that has all of the, all the bells and whistles of the classrooms and the collaborative space. What you can't quite see when you walk on the building is the heart behind the teachers that don't, that they truly want to do what's great for students. They truly want to not just have the space, but use the space for the right reasons. And I'm truly proud of being a part of East Trails Middle School.
Thanks to a partnership with UCM and our career navigators here in LSR7, our Bison Plus students had a great peek behind the scenes in a professional role.
I was surprised at how many people it took to man that, the lights and cameras. They said that it can only take five people, said it can get up to like a dozen, at least in a studio like theirs. But bigger ones, it can take more people.
We went into the room where they like, like broadcasted everything, and then like saw like what they're showing, and they explained it to us. And then we went to the room where they filmed, and like we looked at the teleprompter.
We got to use the cameras, and they were putting it on people's faces, and I was up on the TV. It was pretty cool. It was just fun how hands-on the experience was.
I learned that I would like to explore the broadcasting program a little bit more.
We're doing a, a math activity, and one of the stations that we were doing had to do with commissions and real estate. And it was fun to watch some of the students figure the math of what is 3% of a $650,000 house? And figure it again, and again, and again. I was looking on their calculator, and they had the right answer. And so I asked, like, why do you keep referring this? There's no way you could make over $19,000 selling one house. And I'm like, why? I mean, why do you think that? And so to see them just put together those, those pieces was, is really fun. The teachers here are very passionate, and they want to do something that is connected in real world, but also very relevant to their curriculum, and also fun for the kids.
We got to go to KC Strings, and they explained to us how instruments were made, just like kind of like how they were paired up, stuff like that. We got to see like little like pieces of the instruments, like before they were, you know, attached and the normal instruments and, you know, fully built and everything.
Yeah, it was kind of like they were doing a show and tell with the instrument.
We found the tiny violin. It was like made for three-year-olds.
It's less than a foot tall.
Yeah.
It was like, playing it like this, you couldn't play it.
The bow was like a toothpick.
School learning is just like, all right, here, I'll give you this textbook, and then you fill out this worksheet. You know, the world invites people who are more creative.
So another activity that we did was led by Whitney Garwood. Had the idea of doing window painting for a small business Saturday.
My process with, for choosing what I painted was like, just gathering something that would be holiday-friendly, like not just Christmas, but things that everyone can enjoy for the holiday season.
Their windows just went themselves to this project. And we were able to get input from the business owners that the students would have to take that into consideration, knowing that the tree lighting was going to be that weekend, and big audience for their art.
It, it takes a lot of teamwork to put on a project that large. And we all had to contribute to each other's paintings.
It was fun to see some really quiet students that teachers described as being very quiet just blossom in this experience.
In school, it's kind of, it's kind of just for a grade, but when you're out there, it's kind of like, if this doesn't look good, you're, you're under a lot of pressure. So it adds pressure, but it's also really fun.
The kids aren't just going to school and then waiting until they get out in the world to figure out what is their place. They're starting to figure out what is their place and how do they fit in now.
Fantastic. Thanks so much for coming tonight and sharing that. That was great. All right, we'll move on now to item 3.03. And we want to say congratulations. We are excited to announce the Lee Summit North Bronco Cheerleaders competed in the Southeast Missouri State Varsity Cheer Competition in Cape Girardeau, Missouri, and were named 5A Small Division State Champions. This is the squad's eighth state title. And now I'd like to welcome head coach Ashley Forte, who will introduce the assistant coaches and all the cheerleaders.
Okay, um, thank you for having us. I'm going to call my assistant coaches up first, and then I will call, I don't think I need a microphone, but, um, oh, what'd you say? On, okay, thank you. On, and then I will call my cheerleaders up. So first, I have Dani Zamar. She's one of my assistant coaches. And then I have Ms. Tina Faulkner. So girls, when I call your name, just come up and just stand across there, okay? Um, first, we have Abigail Wilson, Kaylee Covall, Lexi Adamcheck, PJ Turley, Jada Newsen, Elizabeth Songer, Sarah Hashemi, Lauren Garen, Erin King, Zora Kutchlow, Carrie Harris, Jayla Price, Lily Valdevia, Elise Coleman, Olive Neighbors, Tyra Ray, and Brooklyn Muckey.
Very proud of our girls, very proud that they're competing at a high level. We've got the finals, we've got a big dynasty going here. Very proud of our coaching staff. Can't wait to see what you do next.
Our students rock. This was, that was fun. All right, thank you again, cheerleaders. Congratulations. Stacy, great job. All right, now we will move on to item 3.04, our Lee Summit High School Project Update. We have Mike Chili from JE Dunn, who will walk us through this.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for everybody coming to talk about Lee Summit today. This is the overview that we always start with. I know it's a lot to take in, but the, the bottom of the screen would be your, your Blue Parkway. Then the, the left side of that would be Browning. But you can see now, there's a lot, a lot more gray, there's a lot more that's been complete. And we are coming up to the tail end. So currently, we're working in those blue areas, which we're calling Phase Two of the addition. There's a north and south piece of that. And then we just started on the front, where we're going to take out the really old wood frame part of the front, where the tiger head is. And then we'll actually be putting a new metal panel front on that, so that'll be exciting. Then we have some summer stuff. We have a lot of site work to do in the summer. We got a couple areas to get into in the summer when the kids get out. And then we will be out of there. So we're all excited for that. Probably more so the staff and the students, you know, they're, they're kind of done with trying to do surgery and keep going. But you know, we're, we're getting there, so it's been good. You can see the, the final stages of the area we just turned over, which is that B East Wing. Got to move one of my old teachers, Mr. Bobble, over there. So he's, he's got his new space there to finish out, so they're excited about that. You can see the construction underway for the addition. This will be the new pathway that gets across that, that old breezeway was. This is where that old breezeway was, and now we have that nice, large pathway that'll go across the second floor. And then you can kind of see, right, I got a mouse here. You can kind of see this section here, which goes under, underneath through the, there's a greenway that goes towards the football stadium. So that'll be outdoor on the first floor. Then the second floor, they can go across, and then there'll be a library. And the first floor will have a few classrooms, there'll be a nice learning stair there. That'll, that'll show up for the next school year, and you'll have, so they'll be moving into this area and start having classes in there right after they get back from spring break. And then there'll be some things we finish up in the summer, like that learning stair, so that when they come back next year, they'll have all that nice and open for them. So you can see a picture here on the inside, just some roughing. You can start to see that learning stair form there. And then that, the stair that they'd go up, the grand stair that would take them up to that second floor library. So when it's all, when you go through that greenway I talked to you about, So when it's all, when you go through that greenway I talked to you about, you can see what it'll look like when they open up towards the football stadium. So there's a nice little terrace there where they can uh go outside from the second floor. And then you'll have this nice pathway uh that'll open them up towards the uh athletics area. So down here's what that's looking like right now. And then this will be that finished state. Down on the south part of the addition, the other uh side of the addition one that we did, um, you're gonna have some more classroom spaces there, and then another connection uh that kicks you into that um A gym. Um, so they're gonna have a nice, so this will be a nice pathway really all the way down connecting the whole campus, which was one of the big initiatives of this project was to give them a spine that they could walk down and travel down and connect uh, connect and to the other spaces, but also have some breakout areas. So starting to see that take shape. And there's that uh infamous tiger head and the south portion. So all this first floor, right now it's all gutted out. You can't really tell how much has gone inside there because it's still inside. We gotta make all that, take all that infrastructure out, make all that safe uh so that we can actually demo this. So you'll actually see that uh this semester, you'll see that building going down. So the whole front of that will come, um, will come off. You'll get back to, this will now be the new, uh, this will be the front. And then this is a, another picture of the south, um, nice big open area. And then there's uh, there's, this will go up to some classrooms. And then there's also a classroom out here, and then there's some more classrooms behind that um existing wall. And then this will be uh what that front entrance will look like. So right now it's a it's, it's tight to get in and you have that little scaffold you walk under and you go in the, you go in the doors to the admin. So when all that's said and done, uh, this is what the front of that will look like. You can see there's that front entrance right now I was talking about. And then this will be the final state. As always, we, we do post our monthly updates um at this website and you are welcome at any time to go through there and check out the progress. And as always, if you have any questions or want to sneak through, let me know. That is my update. Any questions?
Thank you. And we do have some questions for you. Board member Murdoch.
I'm sorry.
Knew it.
I was there last night.
And?
At the basketball tournament, which that's a narrow fit for a basketball tournament uh with the construction. Having heard students today, my question is this for you. How much parking have we lost at this building currently?
Oh, boy. Well.
Or Kyle, or?
I, I can't tell you number of spaces, but I can give you, so this whole front where we're taking off this front, all that parking went away. And then you have all this parking out uh while we're doing this addition here in the front. We do still have this parking going down to the bus, um, the bus lane area. And then all this middle section right now um is off limits. So there wasn't a ton of parking there to begin with, but uh, that did limit a few spaces there where they used to park. So I don't know the whole number. Kyle may know the full number, but I know that they are, it's tight. That's all I can say.
It is, it is, it is very tight. I only, I, I mentioned it only to show some grace to staff and students when they are parking, well, anywhere in the neighborhood to try to get to activities as someone who parked obviously even on the east uh west side of the church last night to get up to the basketball tournament. Second question. Labor Day?
Labor Day.
Gonna be out?
When is Labor Day?
September.
We're gonna be out. We hope, we're gonna be there. We're gonna be there until, all the way through the summer is gonna be a very busy summer. When they come back, we are, we are planning to be substantially complete in all those areas so that they can function in them. So we should be done into this summer.
Okay. That's good. It works. I, I, somebody, somebody that when we were talking to the students, I, I mentioned that staff were told October.
I've never said October. No one from our project teams.
That is fantastic news because that was a little deflating to the people who thought that, that it might be October. Okay? That's all. But it looks amazing and the new hallway in there down to the gym, amazing. At the same time, I ran into boards literally above my head like yesterday. So.
Wow.
Pay attention. Just telling you.
Yeah, it's ever-changing.
It is, it is a tight fit to get in there right now. Alright, that's it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you know, honestly to that, this, the staff has been awesome to work with and I just really appreciate them because they've been, they, they want to get done, but they've been very supportive and they've also been very flexible to keep things moving, keep programs going while we're going through such a large renovation. So I do want to say thank you to them. And um, I am going to make the shameless plug for Taste Lee Summit because I wanted to see everybody there on March 4th. So I hope you're all there. Thank you.
We, oh, Mike, we do have a couple more questions.
Oh, yeah, more.
But wait, there's more. Wait, there's more. Vice President Fritchie.
Oh, yes, Mike, but wait, there's more. Um, thank you. I wanted to just say, I know it's been a trial for our staff and our students and for the construction company for the last few years. I know they're still going through it. We heard a couple of comments tonight from our D Team kids about, boy, on a wet day, you better wear old shoes because it's muddy around there and all of that stuff. So the kids and a coat because it's cold when you go outside. So I know that lots of modifications have had to be made. And like you said, they've, they've been flexible and I think the staff has been awesome because they've moved in and out of the mobile units to, with their classrooms and everything. But this is what you have when you have an old, old building that's totally getting retrofitted and brought up to modern standards. So JE Dunn has been awesome. Thank you very, very much for your dedication, particularly your leadership, Mike. I'm so proud of your, of this Lee Summit High School graduate who's leading this project. And just wanted to say uh kudos and, you know, keep up the good work and we hope that you guys do get, get done on time.
So do we.
Yeah.
That's the plan. And we're gonna, we're fighting to get there. And everyone's working with us pretty well. So we appreciate it with that.
Thank you.
Board member Sparks?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you so much for tonight's update and I think you've heard lots of kudos and we appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we'll now move to item three dot zero five, our board metrics update, and we'll uh introduce Dr. Barker.
It was perfect. It was just what I needed. I knew what you meant. Each month we bring to the, to the board metrics, um, at right time, right metric, so that we are sharing data and communication with the board at the most appropriate time when a metric presents itself following testing and assessment wheels and so forth. This is a snapshot, as you've seen each month. The slide hasn't changed as, with regard to what we'll be bringing to the board each month with regard to metrics. Specifically this month of January, the district metrics that are on schedule will be to take a look at our winter NWEA data. Consider our panorama student and staff survey data. And I'm gonna pause here and just let you know that you're not gonna see a specific slide that says panorama student and staff data. I'm going to address that as we look at the CSIP data because there are some um interwoven pieces with regard to that panorama being a metric to a couple of places that we have some work to do with our CSIP. And then take a look at D Team updates, although that'll be real minimal because we had a great D Team update in work session. And then the majority of today I will share working through our uh CSIP. We are exactly, maybe a little past now that we're this far into January, at the midway point in our whole CSIP plan. And so it was time for a more comprehensive and complete review of the work. And then we will share a little bit with regard to the equity plan and equity plan metrics. The first piece of data I would like to provide information on is with regard to NWEA. And, and we are trying to provide both consistent data each uh window, but also kind of extend our learning around the data that our various resources provide too. So it will look slightly different than the last time we brought it to you in the fall. As a reminder, we take MAPGrowth. So everyone except for the state of Missouri calls NWEA MAP because NWEA is the company, MAP is the assessment. Missouri calls it NWEA so that we don't confuse it with our MAP test. So when you see MAP, that's what that means. MAP three through eight, all of our students take it as well as our algebra students, and they take it in the fall, winter, and spring. To take a look at our data in terms of updates for winter, what you were looking at here is actually two different sets of data in this chart and this graph. In that, if you look to the uh chart in which we have uh the third grade, fourth grade, the blue and the orange, what that is showing you is two years of data, different kids, same grade level. So third grade last year, third grade this year, fourth grade last year, fourth grade this year. And you can see that for the most part, we have been pretty consistent with achievement on winter scores in our NWEA. NWEA is measured in RIT scores, a Roush incremental unit. Think of it as an inch when you're measuring someone with a ruler. An inch is an inch is an inch, and we measure how many inches you acquire to get your height. You measure how many RITS you acquire to get to your skill level in an NWEA. So when you see in third grade that there was a one ninety-seven RIT or in fourth grade that there was a two oh six point five RIT, think of that as inches stacking up on a ruler. Therefore, moving over to the right-hand side, what we did was we took a look at our LSR seven winter two thousand and twenty-three RIT. The average RIT of our third graders, the average RIT of our fourth graders, fifth, sixth, and on. And we compared that to the national percentile winter RIT. Uh, now, to be fair, NWEA's national means are always normed to their most recent norming study. This most recent norming study was twenty twenty. So this isn't real time comparison. But you can see that with the exception, this is math, with the exception of sixth and eighth grade, we have outperformed that national mean. Eighth grade is a little different for us because our eighth graders take the NWE eighth grade test. Our eighth grade algebra students take the algebra test. So we would expect that to look a little bit different than the national mean. When we look at the same NWEA data for reading, we indicate same, same format here. And actually in reading, we have outperformed the national percentile RIT uh mean in each of the grade levels and areas. So we are doing well when we compare ourselves nationally. And we are consistently performing over years when we look at grade level performance on the NWEA. The other thing that's worth noting is that because this is like a ruler that stacks, you would expect to see, and it scale of, of the graph matters a little here, but you would expect to see those bars stack as the kids get older. Again, that eighth grade drop in math accounts for kids being in different coursework. But you would expect to see them grow incrementally um because more RITS equals more achievement in their learning. Which then shifts us to the second uh thing on that list was the D Team updates. And really in this presentation, I've just indicated that largely we accounted for our DT update during work session in which you had the opportunity to see what D Team work looks like from the student perspective. So that brings us to where the heartier portion of the night's presentation will be, which will be a CSIP update. The Board of Education received and is in Board Docs for the community, this document that was crafted, which is an action step, action plan by action plan review of where we are with regard to progress. It indicates following the same format as our CSIP format, what the data and goals and benchmark were expected to be in year one, two, and three. We've provided what the data is currently. There are a few where data isn't available due to time of year, but where the data is currently. And then a summary of action steps that are happening towards that action plan for each one of these things. As you know, the CSIP is divided into four separate goals. Goal one is providing high-quality experiences with access and opportunity for each student. Goal two is fostering a responsible and caring and inclusive environment. Goal three is providing meaningful public engagement that includes all stakeholders as vital partners in education in LSR seven. And goal four is being responsible stewards and leaders. As we break each of these goals down, and again, with the more detail being present in the more comprehensive document, it is worth taking a look at each individual action plan, the overall title, so we can kind of anchor ourselves to what is one point one all about. And what we've done is listed as to whether our data is indicating whether year two, which we are currently in year two right now, a three-year plan, whether the goal has been met, exceeded, or is on pro, in progress. And then we will look to see based on year two progress and year one progress, did we anticipate our year three or our wrap-up of the, of the CSIP to be on target to be met? So action plan one point one, these are the ones under the goal of providing high-quality experiences with access and opportunity for each student, was an inquiry model instructional framework. We've exceeded our goal for this year and we believe to be on target for next year. Database instructional decisioning, decision-making, we've met the goal and we are on target. Real-world learning and career pathway expansion, I actually broke that into a few different categories because the data was so vastly different. When we look at the measurement of market value assets, we are nearly met. We got to seventy-three percent and we were looking for seventy-five percent. Years two and three of the career curriculum goals are actually complete. So we've completed year three and we are halfway through year two. So much credit to Shannon Booth and her career team. And then the panorama self-efficacy goal is not met. And we will come back to the self-efficacy goal when we look at two point, some of the, some of the twos in terms of action plans. Our curriculum and resource and instructional support goals are met and we are on target, as is the extracurricular opportunities is a little different. We had to switch our baseline and use year two as baseline for this particular action plan because when we moved our sixth graders into the middle school, A, we took a huge population of count out of our elementary schools to be able to use as data, and B, we substantially changed our opportunities at the middle school as a result of receiving those sixth graders. So we are using this year as baseline data. And then one point six portrait of a graduate uses that same measurement that we were so close on, seventy-three percent instead of seventy-five, but we think we're on target for next year. With regard to goal two, which is fostering our responsive and caring and inclusive environment, the first piece is related to that recruiting, hiring, and retaining diverse staff, and there's been multiple work sessions and conversations around that. We are progressing would be the best word that I could indicate because it's not really a very tangible, measurable, quantitative goal, which we know for a number of reasons. We don't list things in a quantitative way that way. But I would say we are on target to continue to progress for year three because there isn't an end goal written for year three. The action plan removed, um, two point two, that was done in our board revision in June because we combined a few action plans. So let's take a look at two, three, and two, five together in a minute. Two point four is professional learning opportunities for all. I marked this as progressing. Quite honestly, I think we're exceeding. But we can't quantify that yet because the goal is identified as our team Lee Summit data, which is not readily available to us yet. So I marked it as progressing sort of um anecdotally based on, on understanding the amount of professional learning that has happened. So I said we're gonna talk about two point three and two point five, student voice and student and staff wellness. And I did so also, if you'll remember, I talked about, we were gonna talk about panorama a little bit differently than with slides because panorama is the measure of these particular goals. So when we talk about two point three, it's important as we look that we're also self-reflective in places where we can continue to grow. And to some degree, it was well timed for you to have these same conversations with students uh because I think you'll probably see in our data reflective of some of what are our students shared with you during work session. When we look at the school belonging baseline for student voice, the measurement of student voice was to increase the school belonging for grades three through five and six through twelve by ten percent year one, and then five percent for year two, and then get to, to ultimately an eighty-five percent. So in grades three through five, in this last panorama, we had seventy-six percent of our students respond favorably to the belonging questions. However, in, and that puts us at the ninetieth percentile nationally. We did pretty well there. In grades six through twelve, more representative of the students who you spoke with at work session, we are at forty-three percent who are responding favorably to feeling connected to adults at school. And that ultimately puts us in grades six through eight at the thirtieth percentile and in nine through twelve at the sixtieth percentile. So this is a place for us to do some work as it relates to student belonging. And this is a place and why we are at that not met and what I had indicated not on target. We would have to see pretty significant change there in order for us to assert that we were gonna be on target with CSIP for next year. So, good work happening. We heard that from some of our students. We also know room to grow in, in that realm. As we look at two point five, action step two point five, similar data, different portion of panorama. This actually uses the self-efficacy data as a form of measurement. The, this is a measurement of student and staff wellness and, and self-efficacy is what was used as the measure with actually a measurement listed as an increase by three percent, five percent, and eight percent. So we should be seeing an increase to be on target to meet our CSIP. So, we should be seeing an increase to be on target to meet our CSIP goals. And if you can, if we can take a look, we can see that at the grades three through five, we are at 62% of the students responding favorably and 56% responding favorably in grades six through 12, putting us at the 80th percentile in grades three through five, 70th and six through eight and 99th and nine through 12. But again, even within the self-efficacy, it's difficult to quantify because it's broken down into different categories such as confidence in remembering my content next year, learning all the topics taught and the confidence in completing assignments. And of course, data varies across those categories. Ideally, what we have seen, however, is that we have not seen the increase that we would need to see in order to be on target. And so, that also was listed as not met. When we look at goal three of our action plan or of our CSIP, the goal three is again, that meaningful public engagement. When we talk about a comprehensive communication, we are met and on target based on the data that was listed. Business and industry partnership, again, much credit to that career department led by Shannon Booth because year two and three are both complete based on the metrics that we set established originally. 3.3, community outreach and support, we are met and on target as well as 3.4 with excellent community service. Which brings us to goal four, which is responsible stewardship and leadership. 4.1 really addresses our fund balance, which you've had lengthy opportunities to have work session on and you'd usually get an update, you know, on a pretty regular basis through finance committee. That's met and on target. Our capital projects and long-range plans, again, frequent updates with regard to that and one pretty recently. Again, met and on target based on the measurement that was established in our CSIP. And the same with technology and infrastructure. So, that really, and again, you know, we could spend a lot of time digging into each of these steps, but thus, the providing this to you upfront and you'd be able to dig in a little more deeply and this just sort of being our pulse check on each of those steps. Which brings us to the last piece of the metrics presentation, which is the original equity plan status review. And as you'll remember, that original equity plan went through board approval in February of 2019 and received board approval. What you have also been provided is, and is also available in board docs, is the equity plan with a new box, if you will, indicating with yellow highlights what the status update is for each item on the equity plan. So, there is a line-by-line accountability for what the status or progress was for each of those items in the original equity plan. So, the equity plan is a unique document. Other than our comprehensive school improvement plans, many, if not most, of our school improvement plans or our program improvement plans are not board-approved, right? But the equity plan was board-approved and had specific timelines. In fact, the last action item on here was 2021. And so, we've marked, I have written, that this has sunsetted chronologically, right? But what we typically do with the CSIP when it sunsets is we revisit a new CSIP. So, certainly, it would be at the will of the board to have some conversation as to whether another standalone plan was necessary or whether we would operate moving forward within the CSIP. Currently, given the timeline provided to the district based on the originally approved equity plan, currently, all of the equity work is well embedded into our CSIP and is guided by our CSIP. So, that's how we're operating under current. If there was a desire of the board to do something differently, we could certainly begin a school improvement process there too. So, with that understanding that the metrics report is whole group, a snapshot with documentation provided for a deeper dig, I am open to questions and there may be others in the room who could help answer some programmatically specific questions as well, should there be a need.
Okay, board members, board member Murdoch?
Thank you, Dr. Barker, appreciate it. I do want to revisit 2.3 on the student voice only because we dealt with it in the work session as well. And so, I think it's worth articulating the lower scores that we see in the higher grade levels. I think it is important for people who maybe won't, or haven't watched the work session, obviously, as of now. One of the comments that some of the students made to us in regards to those survey questions that President Campbell and I were sitting at is, a lot of those things are situational, right? So, they could be taking or looking at that particular question in second hour. And if they're having either a good or bad day in that second hour, they either like the class, don't like the class. Sometimes will influence how they answer that particular question. But more even than that, is it possible, and I know I brought it up in the work session, so I, is it possible that panorama would allow commenting on the questions? Because as the students indicated to us, a lot of times when they get ready to answer a question, they feel that there are things in between, right? I'm in between this, this and this, I need to be able to articulate why, right? I want to be able to say, this is why I am this particular way on this particular day. How would we be able to get that kind of information or allow them that kind of expression?
Yeah, absolutely. So, in short, I don't know. However, that being said, we do have a really good path with panorama where we can ask, right? And we can say, hey, we really like to see this. And the core question that panorama as a company is going to be asking is, is the addition of that going to impair the integrity of the statistical accuracy of the assessment, right? So, that'll be something that their psychometricians look like with regard to the surveys. If panorama can't do that within the survey, then the onus becomes to us with regard to, how can we then supplemental through conversation and an advisory right after the assessment? How can we create another venue for that voice accompanying that survey or matching it or creating a venue to allow students who want to engage further to engage further? But no, certainly worth asking.
And then, my other question deals with the length and number of questions. And I recognize from a statistical standpoint, a lot of the questions are repetitive to see if they get similar answers, right? To try to form the basis for the statistics. What is the timeframe that we allow for students to take the actual survey in terms of classroom time that we are using for the survey? And I only, I only mention that just because, you know, what was articulated to us, and I think it's a fair point, is when we're done, we want to do something else, right? And so, if it takes us 15 or 20 minutes, great, but we don't want to then have to spend the rest of the hour.
I was actually looking to see if Ms. Sanders is here. I do know we've also heard some similar comments along the lines of, you know, we give them X amount of time and she can speak to what the estimated time is. But we also heard, like, when I go to advisory, I was planning on getting some seventh-hour homework done and now we're taking panorama and I gotta quick, quick. So, so how we facilitate and set that up for ourselves as staff members can help also foster that. And that's been something we've worked with over the last couple of years. But Ms. Sanders might be able to speak to the actual duration or length of each time a little better.
So, in regards to panorama and having like open responses, in our staff survey currently, we have an option of something called free responses. So, what, there's a, I'm sure there's a pretty strong possibility that we can look at that through. The option is there, we utilize it for our staff currently and then we can explore, I think. Dr. Seagan is working on it back there right now. And then in regards to the time that it takes, the winter test is a little shorter than the fall and the spring because it doesn't have the list of equity questions in there. And so, what they range is like each section would take about five minutes. So, we're looking at a max of 15 minutes if you have three sections to it. But what we find is that the way the test is set up, in order so that, you know, people just don't click, click, click through, they flop like the range, so they may flip it. And so, it does require like a lot more attentive reading. We have some schools, one of our high schools is not giving it in advisory. They're giving it in a core, giving it in a core class. So, kids, students don't feel like they're missing out on their time to get their homework done and things like that. I would say that this fall was the first time that we've had over 70% participation in the survey for all of our schools.
Okay.
And so, it's something that we're working on.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
And I'll add to that, so that one high school, that was kids in the superintendent council last year asked for that change. Can we take it out of advisory, we're competing against homework time and put it in a core class? So, we know there's dedicated time and afterwards, we all start a lesson together, not, hey, I'm racing, so I can start my homework and you can take your time, I don't care about your homework. So, you know, Lisa Monro did that. And that was, it was student voice and action. And we checked in with them this year and I said, oh, it's so much better. So, we, you know, that, we made that change at that building level for that reason. We've had another question with students and so we're trying to figure out if we can do this. They called it jury duty, but can you have focus groups? Grab 150 or 200 kids, explain the why right beforehand. Because they forget what the why was, even though there's a great video that Jesse put together for them. And then have them take it. And so, that way, they go in right then knowing the why and they feel like they might take it more seriously. Because when we talk about what happens with the data, they're like, oh, I think I'd take it more serious if I didn't know that. And they've been told that before, but they, they think, you need to tell us right before we do that. And you could do that better in a focus group. And so, then, then also as a kid, you don't feel like you're taking the same questions three times a year. You're being selected every once in a while, but it's randomly picked out. So, we're asking panorama, we've already asked panorama, they're wrestling with that because they haven't done that before. And can they make us, you know, keep the statistical analysis and validity if they did something like that? So, we've put that question to them. And again, that was student voice that's asked for that consideration.
Vice President Fritchy?
Thank you, have a few questions. And I think you answered my first one, Ms. Sanders. That my, my first question was, what percentage of the students are measured by panorama?
So, it is every student in grade three through 12.
Okay, but you said 70% all ago.
Yeah, so what happens is we open the survey up and then students have the option to take the survey or not. And understanding that sometimes students are absent when they take it, when their class may take it. We have some students that opted out. And so, in looking at the percentage of students out of all third through 12th graders, we had, it was over 70%. I think we were, some schools were at 98 and then some schools were at 75.
Okay, thank you. And kind of on the flip side of that, my, my second question, and I'm not advocating one way or another for or against panorama, but I'm just saying, is panorama the only way to measure student voice advocacy and wellness?
Absolutely not. There's several companies out here that will do it. It is a part of now IMSIP six and so, in regards to the student voice piece. It's also important to understand that we use panorama for more than just the survey piece. And I know that when we have sort of this external conversation, it's usually around the survey. But we also use it for our student success dashboard, which pulls in data points from several different components. So, NWEA, FastBridge, and what it does is build a quick student profile so that when we're running MTSS, we know how to target kids, right? It also pulls in our Sabers data that is done at elementary. And that's something that staff has access to. And so, that's the other piece of panorama. We use it for more than just the survey. And student voice is one part of the panorama survey. The other part is the social-emotional learning that's in there too. And if we did go to like a jury duty piece, we would have to figure out our, like, how would, how would we still be able to survey students on the SEL piece? Because that is where students are sharing how they're feeling and then we compare that with staff data at the elementary level. And it's not a screener at all, but it does give us an indicator on where students are.
Right.
I think it's also worth noting that panorama is listed by name in our board-approved CSIP.
Right, yeah. And you mentioned IMSIP, I don't know if everybody in the audience knows what IMSIP is.
It is the Missouri School Improvement Program.
Mm-hmm.
And, and all schools in the state of Missouri are required to follow IMSIP six. And it is a list of things that we have to do to be in compliance with the state of Missouri that determines our APR score and all that and our accreditation and all that good stuff.
Exactly, okay. Thank you for that thorough explanation, I really appreciate it.
All right, board member Eslic?
I have a couple of questions for Ms. Sanders. So, with regard to when people take, when our students are taking the panorama survey, does panorama allow us to view how long each student is spending on the survey to kind of see if their answers might be genuine or if they are just click, click, click through?
We are not able to view on the backend student individual response data. And part of that piece is so, there is a level of autonomy in how students are marking. We sort of get for the SEL standard, an overall score on a heat map. But we are not able to see how individual students answer. We're not able to see how long they're spending and things like that due to autonomy for students on the backend and staff.
So, even if it's just like student-blind, like an average of how long students are spending, if that sort of data is available?
We can, okay, she's shaking her head over there, we can.
Sure, yeah, I'm totally on board with that part. Just curious from like a data quality standpoint, like, I feel like that would be a good indicator on whether you're getting good information and to see if that 40% positive experience rate, you know, that belonging rate is, you know, reflective of how they're actually feeling or if it's just?
Click, click, click.
Right, yeah. Right, so, just to understand value of data. Okay, well, second, second question. You and I have had conversations about parental access to that dashboard that you're referring to. If a parent wants to see that and wants to get that total picture, how can they do that?
Reach out to their principal. They can print out that individual student report and send it home. There, I think there's a part of the CSIP that talks about getting that report to parents. Where it gets delicate is that how it's set up in panorama now, in order to print, like, you have to go into each individual student to print. There's not a way to mass print those to send home. So, if we have our elementary schools, we have a 580-kid elementary school for those third through fifth graders, which could be over 300 kids, you would have to essentially click and go through every report. At a high school, you're talking about 1,500 kids, right, to 2,000. So, that's the piece that we've been trying to work with panorama and haven't figured out a clean way to export that to be able to mass print, to send home to parents.
Okay.
Yep, but if parents want it, they can reach out to their principals. And I think when we talked last year, your kiddo had, and I don't think she was a third grader, hadn't even taken the test yet. It's just her other data was in there, attendance data, log entry data, things like that, so.
Great, thank you.
Great. Board member Sparks?
The first question that I have, when we looked at goal three, PowerPoint slide, what page, 12?
Here?
Yes. And when it shows for the business and industry partnership, yours completed, so what happens?
We keep working. Well, first, if you, if you know Shannon Booth, like, we're going to keep working. But, but aside from her drive and her team's desire, you know, we, we, we were just embarking in that very formalized career work as we were building our CSIP. So, we set goals to be what we thought was, you know, the appropriate reachable goal. We've met the goal, so now we know maybe we should have set a little higher goal for ourselves and we continue to set that next bar for ourselves.
And then, that basically guides the next time that the CSIP is being?
Right, we would basically through year three, just sort of continue to work to exceed, if you will. And then, as we begin, which will be sooner versus later, developing that team and that process for the next three-year CSIP, we would assess that and set a goal, although, again, you know, at some point, you get to capacity, right? So, we would have to see where we are and what level of goal we thought was appropriate at that point.
And then, on the second to the last slide, the slide before, questions, where you did mention that the equity plan from the timeline, that it had sunsetted and basically the board having that discussion on where do we go now? And so, I guess my question is, is when does that conversation happen? And do we, does that conversation happen now to where you're getting the direction from the board on where we need to go so that either goals that have not been obtained, we are leaving them there? And goals that have, are we setting new goals to be able to guide the equity work for our district?
Yeah, I, I think it can look like a lot of different things. Ultimately, we, you know, we take the charge from the will of the group of the board. We could consider it to be in sync with the CSIP process. So, as we began thinking about a new CSIP, which again, will probably be convening teams summer-ish to begin work so that we can begin work through next year so that it's ready to be approved for implementation. And we could make a decision as to whether or not through that second CSIP process, obviously, before we start the CSIP process, we'll need to know whether the goal is to have it fully embedded or to have a separate plan in which the CSIP has deep crossover. They would have to be. They would have to be linked very tightly. So I think while there's not urgency for that to be a tonight or today or this month conversation, I do think that that's something that the board could wrestle with over the next, you know, three to six months to give us guidance moving forward with regard to the CSIP, unless the will of the board is to see work or a plan begin outside of a CSIP process or another standalone plan on a shorter timeline than that.
I appreciate that. So talking to my colleagues, I think it's important that we understand that the CSIP was established prior to the equity plan being voted on on with the, the CSIP. So the CSIP existed, not this CSIP, but CSIP period existed prior to the equity plan, correct? Okay. And so, but even with the CSIP already existing and obviously that guided our work in our direction as a district, but the equity plan was created to basically guide the equity work for the district, correct?
Correct.
And so I think that it's very important for us to continue to have a plan that is guiding the equity work for our district. And so since it appears that the current plan has sunsetted and there's not anything that's guiding the equity work other than the things that have been rolled into the CSIP, I would like to see us have this conversation within the next 30 days to really, and if that calls for a special meeting or whatever it calls for, for us to have the conversation as a board on is there going to be an independent equity plan? Are we going to allow it to fold into the CSIP? I would like to remind us that there was lack of trust of the gaps that this district has. And I think it's important that we understand that we still have work to do. And I think all of us have acknowledged that there are still gaps, there are things and barriers that are still in place. We've heard even some of that today, even through our D teams. And so I'm encouraging us to have that conversation. And if no one is objecting to having this meeting within the next 30 days, I think it's that it's important that we make that commitment today so that especially as we leave today, that the public does not feel that there's no equity plan in place and that the board is actually taking action on what we're doing moving forward.
So I agree with everything that you said. I, my thought is, let's get a work session topic so we can discuss and, and think more. I do know that our February work session is packed. And the reason we're not having the February 2nd work session is because we have folks in and out of town and, and we've got board members traveling. My ask would be, could we consider a 60-day? Because I agree 100% with you in the importance of that and having that discussion. So totally agree there. My, my thought is, can we do that within the next 60 days? Because we would have the opportunity of those next two work sessions to include. Is that date wise, I'm trying to line up with our work sessions.
I think it is important that the full board is present and that we can all have that conversation, that input. I do, I, I appreciate, I would like to have the commitment from the rest of the board that 60 days would be our max before we are revisiting this conversation on how we're moving forward with the equity plan.
So Board Member Murdock?
Having been obviously here when we started this plan, I, I think we would need, I'm fine with having that conversation, so start with that. The second thing is though, I think we need to make sure that we have a staff recommendation on, because one of the things that happened with this plan is, and you're aware of this as well, is it, when it first started, we didn't have as many of the actionable items with targeted end dates and stuff like that. It was much more, it was vague, right? I mean, we, we need to, it's, I think it's fine to say that.
It was broader.
Yes, it was much more broad. And so I think if we want to have that discussion, I do think it would be important for us to hopefully send a couple of questions to Dr. Buck about what we would want to see within a standalone, right? So like if we want to continue, we have certain goals obviously already within it. So do we want to continue that? Is that something that we would want to do? Because that would require our staff to make sure that they have, that they are prepared for that kind of discussion on what, what kind of metrics we would actually be seeking within that. But I'm fine with having the discussion, yes, within those, that timeframe.
We, we certainly have capacity to add to the March 2nd work session.
So I guess let me ask the question. So when we say that our goals were broad, what do we mean compared to what we're saying we have now? So tell me.
In the, in the CSIP, right? Clarifying.
In the, in the equity plan. So one of the thi, and did you want to comment? I apologize, I'm not meaning.
Well, and I would say both, yeah.
So what happens is that you have those broad goals and you see them at the top, like goal one, valued outcomes, right? And then what happens is you have those targets and then a team will work to figure out what those specific action steps are to be able to achieve that goal based on where we are now. So if the board decides that the goals that are in there are still relevant and they want to, you all want to keep it, and then, then it kicks to us and what we'll probably do is very similar, if it, if it's standalone, to what was done back then and what is done as a CSIP. And that is bringing a group together of all stakeholders to navigate what these action steps are going to be.
Yeah, and Board Member Sparks, essentially all I was trying to get to is, it's essentially like a narrowed path. We started this wide on a freeway and we started narrowing down into it as they developed the action steps to accomplish each one of those goals. So when we have that discussion, if we're going to stick with either similar goals or especially if we created a new one, we would need to be prepared that it's probably going to need to start bigger so that we can involve the stakeholders and then narrow it down. So we would just need to be prepared for that.
I agree. The, I guess I just wanted to make sure that it wa, because the way I interpret kind of your statement at first was that like the equity plan has changed over time. And so that's what I wanted to clarify.
More specific, right, yeah, yes, sir.
I guess the other question that I just have is, it's my understanding that when the equity plan was put in place, that there was supposed to be like a parent team, kind of like a, a community team that was supposed to be reviewing basically the progress of the equity plan. I'm curious to know, has that happened?
That has not happened. We do have our parent D team. And I know that there's a part of the plan that talks about like advocacy group or equity group for parents. But explicitly looking at the action steps on the equity plan and evaluating, have we done them? I have not been a part of that work.
And I want to add, we did have that in 2021 and Dr. Barker actually led those, we had them in this room. I think it's pivoted to D teams with the work of D teams. So we'll start off with, I can't remember the title of it, Dr. Barker, we used to come to these meetings. But we, we'd have large gatherings in this room.
So when we say it pivoted, did the mission pivot also?
I mean, for me, I, I think when I came on, the task was to, to have groups together, have space for conversation, to talk about what's happening. What I didn't realize, and this will be something I need to go back and look, is what was the connection in reviewing the equity plan? I would say within my department and my work with Dr. Barker, we review it very often. It is directly attached to our department improvement plan. So it's there, but in regards to having it reviewed by a parent committee, since I've been here, I have not explicitly done that.
Okay. I, I think that that's a practice that probably should not have changed. Again, I can't fault, you know, with new people and transitioning taking place. And so I would like to see that community involvement and other additional people that is looking at the equity plan as we move forward, just to make sure that progress is actually happening and that the community is coming alongside as this progress is happening. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Board Member Sparks, and I agree, the equity plan was one of the topics that I, so I'm glad you covered that. What we'll plan to do, unless someone has, unless we have a board member that would like to comment differently, is put this on the schedule to get this on a work session. And walk through, to your point, what's that plan look like? Who's engaged and involved? What's the ongoing monitoring of that, accountability around that? Some, okay, great. The, any other questions? Okay. The other questions that I have, so we see in the CSIP updates that there are some things that are not met and are, are not on target to be met. So without diving into the weeds, I think my question is, what's the plan? So we're not meeting, what's the plan? What's the timeline on the plan? And what's the accountability or the metrics that we're going to look at to monitor to get it either back to met or what else needs to be done?
That's an excellent question. I think the first piece of that plan really speaks to one of the questions that Board Member Eslic raised, which is, given the metric source that we use, being that very small slice of Panorama, let's assure ourselves that we have a comprehensive enough representation of what does student voice really mean or what does belonging really mean? Essentially asking ourselves the question, did we pick the incorrect or are we getting the right data? Assuming that we are. Then the next question is, how do we continue to improve what the task is? How do we begin to ask our building principals with strategy through their building improvement plans in partnership with the district, in partnership with D teams, in partnership with empathy interviews to build very specific strategies to increase those scores or that sense of belonging or those voice if we want to measure it, however we're going to measure it, so that we can really have a strategic approach to that? But I do think in practicality, I think our student voice is probably a little underreflected in the data source that we identified as our metric.
I hear that, and I think that's fair. I do think it would be beneficial to, like you do a monthly update and we have the, the agenda items of the things that you're updating monthly. I do think it would be beneficial to us as board members on these things that are not met to hear monthly of how that's progressing, right?
We certainly can give some anecdotal updates. We would not have new Panorama data each month.
I'm not, I'm not asking.
So essentially what, what work is happening? We've worked with building principals. Do teams have some examples of that we can do that?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you so much for this update. Appreciate your time and all the hard work. There was a lot of met's and exceeded and, yeah, that's exciting. Moving on with our agenda, we will move down to item 4.01, our public comments. Board Member Murdock, can you share the statement regarding public comment, please?
Yep. For public comment, we appreciate your attendance and your willingness tonight to speak to the board. Please remember that while this is a public meeting, this part of the meeting does not contemplate a conversation between speakers and board members. The board does not respond to public comments during the meeting but may ask clarifying questions. Your comments will be noted by the board and if appropriate, we will direct the subject to the administrators who are responsible for that particular subject matter. Pursuant to board policy BDDH, we will be limiting all comments to no more than 10 people with a limit of three minutes each. Your allotted three minutes will be counted down on the screen and please conclude your comments when the timer expires. Only those who have signed up prior to the meeting will be allowed to address the board. Please refrain from using the names of any students, staff in your remarks. Remain respectful and ensure your comments pertain to district operations. We also ask all audience members to remain respectful. Pursuant to board policy BDDG, profane language or comments that constitute a threat to the safety of others is prohibited. And lastly, when your name is called, please go to the podium, clearly state your name and the organization you represent.
All right, thank you. Our first speaker tonight will be Ron Freeman, followed by Risha Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. Buck, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ron Freeman, been in the community for about 10 years. Love this community, love the school district and I hope we keep moving forward. I've seen this district, when I moved here 10 years ago, was considered the top school district in the state. It wasn't, wasn't even a question. I think we've seen it gradually slide in the wrong direction. And that negative slide began when we chose our current approach on diversity or, or is it dignity? Or what do we call it now? It started with dealing with diversity issues, it transitioned to equity, now we're talking about dignity. The labels changed, but the, the approach hasn't. And I think it's very interesting, whether we call it diversity or inclusion, equity or dignity, at the end of the day, we're labeling the majority in our district as somehow oppressors and the minorities as victims of oppression. I recall the original consultant hired for our equity program here, the CSIP plan. Their vision statement was diversity training for closing the achievement gap and dismantling oppression in schools. How's that going? Have we closed the gap? Have we looked at that? Have we considered that gap? I don't think it's being closed. Are we dismantling oppression? Have we even defined it? I remember having a board meeting and the question was asked, how do you define oppression in a school district? Nobody answered it. And it's tough to solve a problem when you don't define what that problem is. Some of our approaches seem to be based upon the assumption that our educators don't really care about students unless they look like them. And we hear about the surveys, and I'm aware because I talk to teachers in this district, of the surveys and some of the questions asking, you know, well, do you treat kids differently if they're a different color than you? Well, it's kind of offensive, honestly, if you think about it. Do you treat people differently if they're a different color skin? Kind of rude, kind of offensive. I would hope not, and I would think that most teachers don't have an issue with that at all. But yet we put that on them. And I think it's very telling when we think about our diversity, the conversation that took place before I'm speaking, that just before me, when we had the dialogue about the CSIP plan and nobody really seems to know what that is, where we're going, the impact it's having. And yet we look at our school district, is it going forward? Is it throttled? Or is it going backwards? And that's a question this board should ask before you consider the policies and what you're going to do. We're spending literally millions on a, on a plan that by virtue of the conversation that we all witnessed tonight, you don't know what we're doing with it. Literally millions of dollars. I'm going to close my remarks with a quick story. I guess I'm not going to have time for that, but the bottom line is, this community deserves better and you can deliver. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Next, we'll have Risha Jackson and she'll be followed by Kristen Grubbs.
Good evening, everybody. I'm not with the specific organization. I am just a concerned aunt slash mom, so I call myself an auntie mom. But a few words, my name is Risha Jackson. I'm a former student in Gradually Summit High School, a proud Tiger of the class of 2000. I stand in front of you not to complain, but to hopefully make you aware and in return to act on the needs of the coaches and students. Again, I'm a proud aunt of a student athlete who deserves, excuse me, who does what he's supposed to do, who is kind and caring. I would like to think his experience, excuse me, his experience in this district has been positive and memorable. As a family, we instill in our children to do the right thing and the right thing will return to you. On a daily, I will call him and his brother and ask them how, how their day was at school. Normally they say it was good. However, on some occasions, they have a few concerns. Although it may be miniscule to some, it poses a concern for me. The first thing are the school lunches. Breakfast and lunch at school is sometimes the only meal that kids receive. It doesn't impact my children like some, but if, but, excuse me, if it impacts, impacts a child, it's worthy of discussion and fixing. My youngest nephew stated that he ingested molded food. My oldest nephew takes his lunch every day because the food is that bad. And he too has had molded or spoiled milk. As adults, we sometimes think that it's not our problem until it becomes our problem. Second, Lee Summit North made history this year. I am so proud of the coach and his coaching staff and the players. This team fights for equality on and off the field. I am not sure if you know what coach endures from not only outside schools, but other schools right here in the district. The kids must defend themselves not only from their peers, but from adults. Me just saying this is disgusting and heartbreaking. We can't stop people from outside saying and doing what they want, but we sure can correct what we have going on right inside of our district. Our team has to put their belongings on the floor, in the car or wherever they feel comfortable instead of being issued a locker by the school. Why? Because there's not enough lockers for the team and those lockers currently present, excuse me, currently present are malfunctioning. Again, miniscule problems to you, but it matters to the children. Again, miniscule problems to you, but it matters to the children. Why, you ask? Because the treatment that they get from other schools lends to this. They begin to say, well, maybe we don't matter. Maybe we are trash. Our lunches are horrible. We don't even have lockers to put our things in. Let's pivot for just a moment. Lee Summit North football team made history. They went to the state this year and did a fantastic job. Sorry.
Ms. Jackson, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Next, we have Kristin Grubbs, followed by Chuck Quezenberry.
My name is Kristin Grubbs, and I'm here as a concerned parent, citizen, and former student of LSR 7. Over the last several days, your office has received a sizable stack of complaints from the community over books in our school district that are inappropriate and even illegal to provide to children. Some may think these efforts to review books in our school libraries are an attempt to silence voices. That is not true. I am an author myself and would hate for my voice to be censored, so I refuse to censor others. There's a small fraction of the books under review that are simply inappropriate, whether it be for sexual scenes or numerous other issues like excessive drug or alcohol use or glorifying self-harm, drug or sex trafficking, and other delinquent behavior minors. But the majority of the books now under review fit Missouri's legal definition of pornography for minors, found in Revised Missouri Statute 573.04. The purpose of all this is to say that there is a real issue here with materials in our libraries, and it must be addressed from two different angles. One, the inappropriate and illegal materials that are currently in our school libraries need to be removed. The complaints you received this week will hopefully help that process along. And two, the books that are brought into our school libraries need to be screened to make sure they are not violating Missouri law in regard to providing pornographic material to minors. I inquired about the process by which books are selected before they enter the libraries. I was told there is no standard practice. Books are selected based on reviews, awards, and recommendations. Why is there not a rubric to assess whether the books fit the educational needs of the students without breaking the law? Similarly, when I inquired as to what the review committee or school board may use to evaluate a book under review, I was told it's a matter of the committee or board reading the book, discussing it, and making a decision. There is no checklist to determine if it is appropriate or whether it has educational value. When our nutrition specialists come up with menus for our school lunchrooms, they do their best to incorporate healthier recipes, ingredients, and cooking methods. Why don't they serve a fatty fried grease food with caffeine and alcohol? Well, because they know that those aren't healthy options for our students, let alone alcohol being illegal. We, as adults, parents, and leaders, are responsible for providing healthy learning, a healthy learning environment for students. Why aren't we treating the books with as much care as we do the meals in our lunchrooms? Save the school we just heard about. Let's work together and get our libraries to be healthy learning environments where all different voices, all different voices can be heard without crossing the boundaries of the law.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Chuck Quezenberry, and then following Chuck Quezenberry will be Stacy Myers.
Hey, before my three minutes start, if there's any children in the room, I'd like them, the parents, to take them if they would, please. That'd be great.
I'm sorry, sir, you can't clear the room.
Pardon? I'm doing it in the best interest of the children. You all don't do that? Okay. Just asking you. My three minutes are starting right now. My name is Chuck Quezenberry. I represent the people, the "we" the people, of Jackson County, Missouri. It's a group that meets regularly here in the Lee Summit area. We are the largest conservative group that meets in the whole state of Missouri on a regular basis. Let's talk. You guys say teach and protect. Let's talk about teach and protect for a second. Test scores are not going up, they're falling. I own a real estate company, and moms look at test scores before they buy houses in the area. Population's growing. We've lost 500 students in the Lee Summit School District in the last three years. Why is that? Why aren't you paying attention to that? What's wrong with the mass exodus that's going on? Mama bears and Papa bears are starting to wake up. Let's talk about protect. How is pornography in the Lee Summit libraries protecting our youth? Pardon me for talking about this, but five of you approved this book last year. He reached his hand down and he pulled...
We'll ask everyone, please to... We'll ask everyone to, please, please let's have order in the room. Stacy?
Good evening. My name is Stacy Myers. This is my 31st year in public education. I'm a social studies teacher at Lee Summit West. I'm here once again to discuss the Phase 2 salary correction that I am still waiting for. As previously established via your words and documents, the following items. First of all, I meet the eligibility requirements. I do believe, secondly, that it is your intent that we were all given this correction. And finally, the public thinks this has been corrected for all employees. Additionally, I've tried to handle this in private by filing agreements. You chose to not hear my grievance by hiding behind an inequitable policy. Making that choice to not hear the grievance continues to be a problem for both you and me. Trust and relationships are destroyed by decisions like this, and just because a policy says you can deflect, doesn't mean you should. You see, you expect me to act courageously each and every day at school and not defer. You expect me to navigate courageous conversations with young adults, parents, and colleagues. You expected me to work throughout a pandemic in a classroom of teenagers. You expect me to work in spite of fear of campus violence? You expect me to work regularly to practice the appropriate response to that violence with my students? And we just conducted an active shooter drill yesterday at the West Side. None of these tasks offer me the opportunity to deflect, defer, and cower. I am expected to show up, be brave, and do the job at hand. You want my vote in April, but you refuse to talk to me. You want me to register kids to be first-time voters in time for the spring election, and I worked on this yesterday, but you won't talk to me. You want me to perform courageous functions on the daily, but you cower behind an inequitable policy. It's time you stepped up and heard our case. Stop taking the easy way out and confront the situation. I have no doubt you are sick of seeing my name on your agenda. I can promise you that I'm tired of regularly attending board meetings myself. But I am choosing to not take the easy way out. I am attempting to navigate a difficult situation that has serious, real consequences and directly impacts my future and my family's future. Each of you are elected to a Board of Education to represent and work in the best interest of all stakeholders, not simply the ones you pick and choose. Just because an inequitable policy says you can defer, doesn't mean you should. And in this instance, it's the cowardly response. Please, step up and make this right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stacy. Our next speaker will be Adriana Paez. Do we have Adriana here this evening?
Good evening. My name's Adriana Paez. I am a parent of two in the district. I've spoken before about the importance of civic engagement and student voice. It was nice to hear those conversations. I wish I could have heard the conversations happening with our students who are part of the D-teams in our district and look forward to hearing what the board experience was on that. As we approach another school board election, this, the importance of civic engagement and student voice are front of mind for me. I've spent most of my career working with young people, and in the last several years, I've reflected a lot about my own experience as a young person and how disconnected I was to things happening in my own community, and more broadly, many of the important social and political issues taking place across the country. I'm no longer disconnected and I'm now advocating to both strengthen the culture of civic education and increase the civic opportunities available to young people in our public education institutions because I believe everyone has a place in our democracy. Our youngest citizens turn out in the lowest numbers, especially in local elections, where they're much more likely to be directly impacted by the results. Some people think young people don't turn out because they're just apathetic. I don't believe that to be true. I believe young people have much to contribute if they are given ample opportunity to do so, with plenty of guidance and support along the way. I believe our public schools have a responsibility to provide more of those opportunities. I know of recent attempts to request voter registration events in our high schools that were unsuccessful. I've been more hopeful recently to know that there is a group of committed LSR 7 parents, staff, and community members continuing to advocate for more opportunities to encourage our youngest citizens to participate in shaping their community through the electoral process. I would like to encourage the board and the other administrators present to... Oh, lost my place. To consider how LSR 7 could strengthen the civic culture of our community and help build a stronger, more inclusive and representative democracy to ensure all eligible young voters are using their voices and using their power to exercise that great right that so many throughout history and still today have had to fight so hard for, the right to vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rachel Aguery.
Good evening. At the October board meeting, Board Member Sparks asked the right question. How do students fall through the cracks? And I've thought about that a lot the last several months. But here are some things that we need to consider. From the numbers presented by the NWEA surveys in determining what groups are in what percentile, we should remember that many students in these surveys have come from other districts, districts that have failed in preparing them academically, and the information presented needs to reflect that. While it is our duty to do our best as educators to provide a quality education, we cannot be held responsible for students who come into the district without basic elementary skills. We are having to start from ground up, and I guarantee you, we have a lot of middle and high school kids who don't even know they're parts of speech. We have to also stop making everything about race. LSR 7 is made up of diverse families, and we are all here to provide an education to every child. While the numbers should guide us, they should not become our identity. A few years ago, Community Solutions Focus Group, a Lee Summit community-based group, offered to come into the district with retired teachers and work with any student needing intervention in reading. They offered their services for free. This proactive intervention would have reflected success rates amongst all groups of children. And as Dr. Heather Kenny stated during the district's online lunch discussion about curriculum and instruction this past December, anyone can provide in the intervention of students as long as they are trained. Imagine if the district would have put the $1-plus million into hiring and retaining quality teachers. It's like we're spending money to put new rims on a car when the engine doesn't even work. In addition, we need smaller classrooms. Smaller classrooms allow for more individualized attention, accountability, and support. Smaller classrooms take the place of the touchy-filly programs we're wasting money on. And behavior. While it is greatly appreciated that the district is working on increasing employee pay, it needs to be said that it is allowed in our, that the behaviors are allowed in our school for some. It's not worth it. LSR 7 teachers on both sides of the political aisle agree that the disruptive behaviors allowed in our classrooms, like daily fights, just disrespect, and even some sexual assaults in some of our schools, are keeping us from doing our jobs, and that is teaching students. Not only are we seeing aggressive behavior in our students, but teachers are afraid to speak out because of the backlash from administrators and colleagues. I have specifically talked to teachers that have been reprimanded for speaking up, have been moved to another position without consideration, even their jobs threatened. Is this the sense of belonging atmosphere we want for our teachers at LSR 7? Most teachers are doing their best to provide a quality education, but we need these issues to be addressed, not the divisive rhetoric that this district is pushing.
Thank you, Rachel. Next speaker will be Marla Stout.
Good evening. I'm Marla Stout. I'm a parent to one child at Summit Lakes and one at Lee Summit West. Both attended Summit Point Elementary, and I'm here to talk trash. Trash is a bothersome thing. Babies and children make a lot of it. Teens refuse to pick it up, and there are sometimes heated family debates about who is responsible for hauling the garbage cans to the curb. No one, other than Oscar the Grouch, loves trash. In November of last year, another local community released a statement saying they were opposed to a proposed landfill, and at that time, it was assumed a rumor, since there was no evidence of such a project, on 960 acres at the Horage 150 area about a half a mile from the Lee Summit and Raymore City limits. Today, the Lee Summit City Council signed a joint resolution in opposition to this project, as it now looks to be in the early workings of reality. My reason for coming to the board this evening is that as a parent, I'm very concerned about the proposed location of this landfill, as the proximity is less than one mile from Summit Point Elementary and less than six miles from Lee Summit West and Hawthorne Hill Elementary. Imagine sitting at a football game at West, and if the wind is blowing just right, there is more than the smell of competition in the air. While the smell alone should be enough to oppose this kind of development anywhere close to large numbers of resident populations in schools, the long-term impact on health, environment, and land values are concerning as well. Research previously done by the National Library of Medicine has shown that people living closer to landfill sites suffer from medical conditions such as asthma, diarrhea, stomach pain, reoccurring flu, cholera, malaria, cough, skin irritation, and tuberculosis more than people living at a distance. According to a study out of the University of Colorado Boulder, emissions from landfills pose a threat to the health of those who live and work around landfills. A study in New York found that there is a 12% increased risk of congenital malformations in children born to families that lived within a mile of hazarded waste landfill site. So I ask, what responsible private developer would even consider putting a development of this kind within walking distance of a school? The answer is simple, one that cares more about money than our community. The opposition by the city of Lee Summit and other communities outside of Kansas City does help, but as parents, homeowners, and staff within this district, more opposition is necessary. I respectfully request that the KC Coalition of Schools, which includes not just Lee Summit but several surrounding communities, show a strong, united opposition to this project as well. Lobbyists for this project have already been in Jefferson City trying to get support. While it is opposed by Representative Strickler and other local legislators, the actual proposal has yet to come before the Kansas City City Council. We must let the city of Kansas City know that as much as we don't want this around our schools and, as much as they don't want this around their schools and residents, neither do we want it in close proximity to ours.
Thank you. All right. Moving on on our agenda, we'll move to item 5.01, which are our board reports, and I think we'll start, Board Member Eslic, at your end of the dais.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll keep mine pretty short. So Board Member Foley and I conducted a couple of school visits like we do, try to do every week. We've skipped a couple unfortunately to scheduling conflicts, but we visited Pleasantly Elementary and Summit Lakes Middle. Both of those were great. I had the opportunity to judge Underwood Elementary's spelling bee, so that was a lot of fun actually. I've never been a judge for a spelling bee, so that was pretty cool. I of course attended the Finance Committee meeting with President Campbell, but I'll let you take the reins on that one. Also participated in reviewing the Belcher scholarships with President Campbell and Board Member Murdoch and that was a really good experience too with, first time I've served on that sort of committee, so it was great to see some of the work that our students have put together and getting the opportunity to read their essays was probably my favorite part, so that was great. The biggest meeting that I probably attended this past month was the Ed Foundation's Board of Directors meeting, which I have some notes to put out about that. The Ed Foundation had their student-led grant program, which students were able to apply for grants up to $1,000 to be used for any number of student projects. They just had to write kind of a proposal of what they wanted to use it for within their schools. So those were awarded, all of them have been given out. So at some point, the Ed Foundation will be able to kind of collect the results of what those students have used them for, so I'm really looking forward to seeing that. Peak teacher grant applications are open and those are due on February 24th, as well as student scholarship opportunities with the Ed Foundation are also open and those are due on February 10th. And we'll do another shameless plug, even though Mike Childs beat me to it for Taste of Lee Summit, which is on March 4th, so get your tickets, they're filling up fast. So yeah, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Board Member Murdoch.
Just one item for me. And Board Member Eslick already mentioned the Belcher Scholarship Committee that we were able to participate on. It's always excellent to get to view student work and stuff like that and the number of people who are willing to apply was also fantastic. So appreciate all of those students who are willing to submit applications for that scholarship. I know Sarah McMillan is not, it doesn't look like she's in the room or here right now, but sorry Sarah, I had to bow out of the insurance meeting right before it started, so I apologize that I didn't make it to that. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Board Member Murdoch. Board Member Sparks.
I attended the insurance team meeting for benefits. It was great to hear the enrollment, how high it was, and then also the things that we're looking for in the future of making sure that our staff is receiving the benefits that not only they deserve, but that also that they desire. I also attended the University of Arkansas, was able to not only see my son run, but also the Lee Summit West Track Club run also in Arkansas, so that was great to see and be there. Also, I was able to attend Summit Lakes Middle School NASB, which is the National Society of Black Engineers. Those students from West that presented to us in the last board meeting, those kids actually went over to Summit Lakes. It was great to see the interaction with those middle school kids. They were dancing, playing with robotics. I have some great videos, so if anyone wants to see it, check me out and I can be able to show you. And then last but not least, the last two things that I want to acknowledge that I serve on the Teacher of the Year and Staff of the Year, and so I'm encouraging you, please take advantage of these last two weeks to submit your Teacher or Staff of the Year. I also commend the district for making that addition to staff. We have very hard-working, classified staff in this district and they deserve to be recognized just like anyone else. And then also the Mayor's Character Briefics, which is taking place on the 26th, that is from 7 to 9, and so please, if you have not purchased your ticket, please do so and I plan to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Sparks. I would like to see the pictures. We'll go to Board Member Foley.
Thank you. This month, I visited Pleasantly Elementary and Summit Lakes Middle School with Board Member Eslick. I also had the opportunity to tour Lee Summit West High School alongside our newly-elected State Representative Strickler. And at the Lee Summit Economic Development Council Workforce Alliance K-12 Pipeline Committee meeting, I was able to join a breakout group examining how we can provide opportunities for students to volunteer in healthcare settings to get clinical experience to enhance future opportunities. So that's really exciting to see how they're growing that. And then at the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, we discussed a review of some legislative priorities, along with discussing the levy transfer that will be on the ballot in April to increase LSR7 staff salaries. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vice President Fritchie.
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you to the board members who volunteered to read all the scholarship applications. I know that that's quite a process. I did that for my first four years on the board, so thank you very much for doing that and for selecting our winner. Are we going to announce our winners at some point? Do we know?
I'm not sure when they actually are making that announcement, to be perfectly honest. We'd have to look into that.
Okay. I just wondered if when we announced our winner.
Know what the actual date is.
Okay. But thanks for that and I just wanted to tag along on Board Member Eslick's LSCF report regarding Taste of Lee Summit. I've served on that committee for I don't know how many years and then they have subcommittees and I'm on the Restaurant Committee. So we have been working really, really hard to try to round up some great restaurants this year for Taste. I think we've got some good ones coming up, so watch for the announcements coming out on that. I'm not going to give any spoilers here, but I think you'll enjoy the food at Taste of Lee Summit this year and all of the fun and festivities, so I hope y'all can come. Just a quick recap, no big committee meetings this last month for me. December 20th, I did get to go to Summit Technology Academy and I helped to interview students in Mrs. Pearson's Health Sciences course regarding their education and career goals and all of that, and that was a lot of fun. Shannon Booth and I were in the same group that interviewed the students and that was great. And so thanks for that invitation to them. And then January 6th, we had a board leadership meeting, Dr. Buck and President Campbell and I, and then again, the 18th, yesterday, we also had another meeting with Dr. Buck and President Campbell and I. Today, I had a lot of fun visiting East Trail's Middle School and Pleasantly Middle School's gifted classrooms. I know that this year is our first year to put gifted back into the middle school program and so it was just fantastic for me to be able to see those teachers and those students in action and working on some fun projects like mummification and pyramids. You can guess they're studying Egypt in 7th grade right now. And then 6th grade, they're reading a really good book. It's a cultural book, darn it, Thirst, is it Thirst? Yeah. It's about an Indian family. And I've got to hear that discussion and listen to some of that book and the fabulous themes in that book, fantastic. So I'd like to thank the teachers, Jessica Hill and Jenna Nelson, who welcomed me into their room, along with their students who were very enthusiastic. They were very friendly. I kind of wandered around asking them questions about their projects and looking at how the thought processes that went into them, including Board Member Murdoch's son was in one of those classes and a few of my old kids I had in Sunday School class and kindergarten were in those classes. So it was fun to touch bases with those kids again and see those great teachers and those kids in action. So thanks for the opportunity, Dr. Wright. Thank you very much.
Great. And I'll just say, you know, thank you so much to all board members. We all participate in these committee assignments and just appreciate all the extra hard work that you put in around all of that, so appreciate that very much. I won't reiterate, but it was fun to party with the folks that I parted with on the committee meetings. I'm excited also to be working with the MSBA around the superintendent evaluation forms and process and things like that, representing our district in that committee and excited to see where we go in the future as we, one of our big jobs is evaluation of the superintendent, so excited to also serve in that way as well. So now we'll move on to item 6.01, the Finance Committee Report. And I will tell you, our meeting was pretty short. We had some important things, but just a few this month. So I'll just do a quick highlight and then we'll move on down the road. We did get the lease agreement for what we've talked about a lot around the Chromebook leases. So this last step is just to approve the lease agreement. We've already approved that we're going to move forward in that way. And again, kudos to Dr. Whaley and Dr. Shelton, saving the district substantial, over a million dollars is big. And also exciting, Dr. Whaley shared that those Chromebooks are in transit and it looks like we will have them distributed probably in February out to buildings to be distributed to students. So that's also an exciting step for all of our students at the secondary level because you'll be getting those new Chromebooks. So if you're hanging on, keep hanging on because it's closed for replacement. So that was exciting news. A couple of other items around ice melt and then also the Unipack Corporation. Another item that we talked a little bit about was the Facilities Management Group went through an RFP process and has selected a new work order system. So that'll be implemented and there'll be transfer of data from the old system as well. And then we reviewed the bond budget update, just like we do every month, appreciate all the details that were provided around that. And then we went on and talked about setting the tuition rate, which we have to do on an annual basis and we have great, Nathan takes care of us in making sure those forms are in place and completed and we've got that information ready that will be for our approval tonight as well. So that's just a brief summary. Any questions around that? Okay. Then we will move on to the approval of the transfer of funds, item 6.02. I move to approve the transfer of $4,643,879.49 from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mrs. Mert, can we do a roll call, please?
Vice President Fritchie.
Aye.
Board Member Murdoch.
Aye.
Board Member Sparks.
Board Member Eslick.
Aye.
Board Member Foley.
Aye.
President Campbell.
Aye. All right, motion.
Item 6.03, approve the treasurer's report and payment of the bills. I move to approve the treasurer's report and payment of the bills.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mrs. Mert, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Board Member Murdoch.
Aye.
Board Member Sparks.
Aye.
Board Member Eslick.
Aye.
Board Member Foley.
Aye.
Vice President Fritchie.
Aye.
President Campbell.
Aye. Again, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move to our items for consent decision. Can we get a motion for that?
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All right. Yes, thank you. Mrs. Mert, can we do a roll call vote for that, please?
Vice President Fritchie.
Aye.
Board Member Sparks.
Aye.
Board Member Foley.
Aye.
Board Member Eslick.
Aye.
Board Member Murdoch.
Aye.
President Campbell.
Aye. Motion carries again unanimously. We'll move to item 8.01, our Facilities Management Work Order System. And Dr. Shelton, would you like to share a few words?
Yes, thank you, Board President Campbell. And also just generally, I would like to remind everyone, the next four items on the agenda have all been reviewed by the Finance Committee. Questions have been asked at that level and the process has worked very well for us as we kind of do a first wash, if you will, of these agenda items prior to coming to the board. This particular item has been in the works for quite some time. The operations team has a goal and a mission to serve and to support our students, staff, and community with integrity and care. One way we do that is to ensure that the work that needs to be done in this district is done effectively and efficiently. One tool we use is the work order system. The current work order system has served us well over the last handful of years, but it's not serving all of our needs. And so Mr. Guerrel, Ms. Bataglia, Dr. Whaley, all agreed that we need to take this product back out to market and RFP was issued. Responses were provided, they were reviewed, and it was determined that the product that's before you is the best product to help serve and support our students and staff as we seek to provide their needs. And I'll give you an example. When work order is placed, one thing we do is monitor that work order to make sure that it's moving through the system, it's moving through in a timely manner. Our current work order system doesn't allow us to do that very effectively and this new work order system will allow us to do that more effectively. The cost difference is negligible, it's roughly the same amount, that annual amount is roughly the same amount. There is about a $12,000 implementation cost that goes along with this system, but we feel like that expense is well worth the increased service, improved service that we'll provide our staff.
All right, can we get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract with Facilities Management expressed as defined in the attachments.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or discussion? Board Member Murdoch.
Mine is real simple, just on the switch over to, once this is actually done, the timeline of actually switching it over and making sure that it's essentially a seamless transition, right, to processing what might be current orders going into the system.
Immediately. We will begin this process, transition immediately over and hope to have it functioning. Krista, are we thinking maybe a March roll into this? So it is something that we're going to do fairly quickly.
Okay, okay. Thanks, appreciate it.
Great. No other questions, then we'll move to vote.
Board Member Sparks. Board Member Foley.
Aye.
Board Member Eslick.
Aye.
Board Member Murdoch.
Aye.
Vice President Fritchie.
Aye.
President Campbell.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Shelton. Moving to item 8.02, exciting, lease agreement. Can we get a motion? Did you want to share anything before we move?
If anybody doesn't have any questions, I'm good.
Can we get a motion and a second and then we may have some questions.
I move that the Board approve the master lease agreement with First American.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions? All right, again, kudos. Thank you for the savings and being on top of our technology. Awesome. All right, item 8.03.
Got to have a vote.
We have to have a vote. Okay.
Let's have a vote, Mrs. Mert, please.
Board Member Foley.
Aye.
Board Member Eslick.
Aye.
Board Member Murdoch.
Aye.
Vice President Fritchie.
Aye.
Board Member Sparks. President Campbell.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We're moving on, now we're moving on to item 8.03, our Site One Landscaping Supply and Clayton Paper Ice Melt. Dr. Shelton, did you want to share anything ahead of this?
This is a pretty straightforward agenda item and purchase.
Okay. Then can I get a motion and a second?
I move that the Board of Education approve a yearly contract for one year with the possibility of two additional one-year renewals for a total of three years for ice melt to one primary vendor, Site One Landscaping, and one secondary vendor, Clayton Paper.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions for Dr. Shelton? All right, then we'll move forward with a vote, please.
Board Member Eslick.
Aye.
Board Member Murdoch.
Aye.
Vice President Fritchie.
Aye.
Board Member Sparks. Board Member Foley.
Aye.
President Campbell.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we'll move to some trash, item 8.04, our trash liners. And anything you wanted to share ahead of?
Similar to the ice melt, this is a fairly straightforward purchase.
Thank you. All right, can I get a motion and a second?
I move that the Board of Education approve a yearly contract for one year with the possibility of two additional one-year renewals for a total of three years for trash liners to Unipack Corporation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All right, then we'll move forward with a vote, please.
Board Member Murdoch.
Aye.
Vice President Fritchie.
Aye.
Board Member Sparks. Board Member Foley.
Aye.
Board Member Eslick.
Aye.
President Campbell.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Shelton. All right, now we'll move on to our Transportation Annual Program Evaluation, that's item 9.01.
That's item 9.01. And we'll have Bruce Maples.
And the added benefit of Dr. Shelton.
And the added benefit of Dr. Shelton.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Board, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit of information about the Transportation Department. Before we get started, I just want to compliment Bruce and his team, his leadership team, the drivers, the aides, the trainers, the mechanics, the routers, the dispatchers, the office staff, do a tremendous job each and every day transporting 10, 12, 15,000 students throughout this district with two goals in mind. One, safely, to get students to and from school, to and from activities, to and from field trips, shuttle services throughout the district each and every day. And the second goal they have is to do that in a way where they're building relationships. In many, many cases, the bus driver, the aide, that our students encounter, that's the first encounter they have each and every day, and it sets the tone for the day. And at the end of the day, it allows those students to have a warm and friendly, caring, loving person to drop them off before they start their evening with their family. And Bruce and his team do an outstanding job of providing those two services.
All right, I'll go over the program overview. We're transporting about 12,601 students, and that's 407 different routes we do every single day. Besides the bus drivers and the bus aides, just like Dr. Shelton says, we have a lot of people in the background that make it happen. Our dispatchers, our routers are working every day to make sure that the buses are efficient and the students get to school safely.
As I've mentioned in other presentations, we don't work in isolation. Every department, every function that we serve in our district is part of a larger team, is part of a larger goal. Those goals outlined that the Transportation Department are focusing on this year are goal number two, professional learning for all staff, as well as goal number four, capital projects and long-range plans. We're going to talk a little bit more about training throughout this presentation, but some of the training that the Transportation Department is focusing on this year, dignity training, defensive driving, CPR and AED usage, student management. The two bottom bullets are something that Bruce will talk about more in our mentoring program, but the new employee two-week and 30-day follow-ups, as well as a ride along with new drivers. In regards to our capital projects and long-range plans, you may recall that Dr. Miller led a team, a Pratt team, through a review of our current fleet. Out of that Pratt team came a recommendation to purchase 30 diesel buses. We put out that RFP, decided to purchase 23 diesel buses. We are, as we go through this process, long-term, going to consider alternative fuel sources, CNG technology that we use in a large number of buses, never really caught on, and that technology never really caught on in the industry. And so we are moving away from the CNG, back into the diesel. But as new and innovative fuel sources come onboard, we're going to review those sources and see if there are some opportunities there. Out of that work, though, we have developed a 10-year bus purchase schedule.
All right, first of all, and the financial implications, that bottom line for '21, '22 is where we stand right now with eligible riders and ineligible riders. It's hard to get away from having ineligible riders because we do have what we call boundary roads or dangerous roads to cross. And most of the time, those students are under a mile, so those are non-eligible riders or we don't get funding for those.
So any eligible riders, rider who is...
Can I stop you for just a second? I apologize. On our thing, we have different numbers between '20, '21, '22 than what is up on the screen. Pretty significant different number, and so we have 17,079 total ridership.
Those would be wrong then.
Okay, all right.
I updated and it must not have gotten...
Okay, all right.
Everything else.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to let you... Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Murdock. Appreciate that. And we'll get you the updated slides. So eligible riders, as Bruce mentioned, are those riders who live a mile or more from their school and they're transported. Any rider who is under a mile is considered ineligible. In regards to what that really means, eligible riders turn into eligible miles, and eligible miles turn into reimbursable miles. So leading into that, as you look at the transportation funding, eligible miles drive the funding that we receive from the state. As you can see, we're somewhere between 1.3, 1.5, almost 1.6 million miles of eligible driving each year. We also have ineligible miles. Those miles are related to the students who live under that mile. Also, any activities, those trips we take for activities, field trips, any shuttles we run throughout the day, those are ineligible miles that do come at a cost to us but are not reimbursable. Please note that on the far right of this table, you'll see in the past, because the state has not fully funded in the past transportation, that we have been, not received all the funds that were allocated to us. So that amount has been somewhere between $3 and $4 million. Luckily, this year, the state is fully funding transportation, and so we will realize, I believe, about a $3.5 million increase in our transportation funding.
All right, our fuel and maintenance. Down at the bottom, you can see what we spent on CNG and diesel. And then the maintenance costs are running about the same. Since we have bought 23 diesel buses, we're able to get rid of our higher expensive buses, HDX buses, that are causing problems and have raised up that maintenance cost quite a bit. So once we get those in, our maintenance costs will go down, but of course, we're paying for new buses also.
An interesting note is that '20, '21 school year, you can see the impact of COVID and being shut down for periods of time and reduced routes. So you can see a significant drop in our expenditures in CNG, diesel, unleaded gas, and not a significant drop in maintenance cost.
We're going to talk about staffing now and meeting the students' needs. Staffing is a nationwide problem still. I think it's gotten outside of the transportation into other facilities or stores and such. Everyone's looking for help. So as you look at this on January, where we sit right now, it looks like we're sitting very bad, but we're not. We are covering all of our routes compared to other districts that are having to do rolling blackouts, they say, where all their staff is out also driving. We're getting better week by week. We have three more people in training right now, and we're not having to empty out all our dispatchers and routers so they can keep up with their regular jobs. So week by week, we are getting better. And we're hoping in the next, by March, that we'll be full up.
This is a slide we want to spend a little bit of time on. It's this year, last year, and the year before. This is data that outlines the student behavior that we're seeing on buses. Now, you'll see the goal here is customer service and student support. What you'll see here is where we need to support our students the most, and that's the behavior on the bus. You'll notice that endangering safety. That's activity, horseplay on the bus, maybe leaning out the window, crawling over a bus seat, that type of behavior that just distracts the driver, maybe distracts the other students. 2020, '21, we had 29 incidents of that. 21, '22, 110. This year so far, and we're talking this year, so year-to-date, as we said here in January, 309. That's a significant increase. Fighting, 21 to 42 to 54. Problems with peers, 41, 35, and 105. Days of suspension, 134, 288, and to date, we're about 164. Where customer service and support come in, in one area, is partnering with parents. I mentioned a little bit ago that training is important, and we'll talk a little bit about training here in just a moment. But partnering with parents with student behavior is paramount for us. And so we reach out to parents, and you can see, last year, we had 1,408 phone calls to parents. To date, we have 1,445. And so as you track that, our assumption would be that we would be somewhere around 2,800 by the time we get to the end of the year. On the training piece, as we work with our drivers to build relationships, one area that Bruce and his team have done an outstanding job is bringing the dignity training into the department, into their monthly staff meetings. Working on that sense of belonging, that sense of inclusion, building those relationships on a daily basis internally among staff, with students, and also externally with parents is paramount for us, to us, making improvements in this area.
As we said before, we're doing fleet replacement, and we're on a 10-year cycle of purchasing. That 10-year cycle will probably lead into alternative fuels. Like we said before, alternative fuels right now are not stable, as in they have low miles for the school buses, and we want all the problems worked out before we ever get a hold of an alternative fuel bus. Like we said before, we did an RFP for the 30 diesel buses, and we purchased 23, which is really going to help our fleet and help our maintenance costs, like I said.
There are many things to celebrate in the Transportation Department. First and foremost, we take a lot of pride in being in an inclusive and collaborative environment, but that's both internally and externally. We have received the Fleet Excellence Award. That means 95% of our buses or more have passed inspection from the Highway Patrol, the very first inspection. And also, we're building a relationship with the Homeland Security and planning a couple of activities in the coming future to address, to do a vulnerability study, as well as a tabletop activity. We do have areas and opportunities for improvement. Mentioned earlier, student management training, cross-training, as we talked about shortages and staffing. It's important that we have the ability to plug people in where needed, and cross-training is vitally important with that. Communication, communication internally and externally, and Bruce will talk a little bit more about that here in a second. And then, of course, building relationships, building relationships internally and externally.
All right, our program refinement, focus on professional learning. We have our mentoring system for our new drivers that come in. That way, they feel accepted in our department. Our department's more of a family-style department where we have socials, get-togethers, things like that. We want everyone to belong. We do training related to students. In fact, today, we started a new class for all our drivers and aides, how to connect you and your students. Seems like it went okay today. They really were engaged, and we have about eight more sessions just so we can get all of our employees through there without missing any of our midday routes. Increase and improve internal and external communication. We use every form of communication we can with our drivers so they are informed about what's going on. And then external communication, as you saw, we make a lot of phone calls to parents. Not all the time, those are bad phone calls. Some of those are good phone calls, telling them about what their student did to help out on the bus or help another person. And then, of course, some of those are behavioral phone calls, just so the parent can talk with the student before they get themselves in trouble and get a conduct card.
All right. Vice President Fritchy.
Hi. I read the full written report prior to the meeting, so I treated it like a written report, so I'm just going to reach my notes on this, if that's okay. And so Bruce Maples, thank you. Thank you for that comprehensive report. That was very good. I appreciate it. In spite of your driver shortages, our Transportation Department has provided, or made modifications and taken steps to help solve for those shortages. We know you guys have worked hard on trying to cover for each other and striving to provide a good working environment for the staff members in your department through those socials. I've been to a few of those in the past. We've been invited to a few of those in the past, and those have been great. They're very family-oriented. Thank you for that. And I appreciate the leadership opportunities for your staff to provide input and to participate in the problem-solving when you have those meetings with your staff, for them to be able to have that input and help solve problems. I did notice that, in reading your report, that that discipline had really risen this past year, and that, you know, you say in there that you're going to take some steps to improve that. And I appreciate that, that you guys have studied that, and to try to institute a student management training for your staff members. And you mentioned sending your safety student personnel out into the schools to teach bus behavior. And I think that's a great idea. In fact, I remembered that this morning when I was at East Trails Middle School. Dr. Moore had walked me to the gifted classroom this morning, and we were just standing there overlooking the sixth-grade common area from that second floor. And I said to her, we were talking about a lot of different things, she was just kind of letting me know how East Trails was doing, and I said, you know, the transportation report says that the discipline referrals are up this year. And she said, yeah, I understand that. And I said, one of the things they said they'd like to do is send their school safety personnel out in the schools and talk about bus safety. And she said, well, I'm all for that. So I think you'll receive, probably receive some positive feedback on that when you go to talk to administrators about that. The other thing I noticed as I left East Trails today was driver training taking place in the parking lot. Yes. I was hearing the beep, 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 and I turned around and those buses were backing up, and you can hear the beeps on that. So, you know, I know you guys are always, always training, and you're always training new people. So thank you, because I think it's, whenever I think of transportation, I always think of you guys trying to juggle all these balls in the air. You've got all these things going on, you've got maintenance out here, and, because I've taken a tour and driven a bus before, before you took over, I got to do that, and that was a lot of fun, to drive the bus around the parking lot. But I know that you've got a lot of irons in the fire at one time that you're trying to juggle in your job. So thank you for your dedication to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Buck?
I just wanted to highlight on that transportation funding, when you saw the years of negative three to negative four million, state statute says that the state shall fund 75% of the cost of transportation. It's been under 20% every year for quite a number of years. The last time it was fully funded at that 75% rate was 1993 until this year. And I also want to applaud Governor Parsons last night, or yesterday, I'm sorry, in a State of the, State Address, asked for it to be fully funded again this year, this next year, so, in the next year budget. So I just want to highlight, first time since 1993, it's over $3 million for us that we've been taking on, that's a requirement by state law that states should be taking on, and that the governor's asked for it to be included in the budget for FY '24.
Great, thank you. Board Member Sparks?
I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate what you do by leading the department, but also, I appreciate all of the bus drivers, the aides. You know, I think so often, when we think about a school system, we don't really value the fact that bus drivers' responsibility is to make sure that those kids get to school safe. And so while they're juggling picking them up on time, while they're juggling maybe some behavioral things that are going on, or even relational things amongst the students, but all those things are all taking place all at the same time. But then ultimately, it's their goal to make sure that they're following the rules and the laws, and making sure that our kids are getting to school safely and that they're getting picked up and getting taken home. And so I appreciate it. Please carry that back to your staff to let them know that we truly do appreciate what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Eslic?
Thank you. This was a great presentation. I appreciate all the information. I had a question about the transportation funding slide, just because back in 2016, that year, the ineligible miles that we were incurring was so high, 609,000. that year, the ineligible miles that we were incurring was so high, six-hundred-and-nine-thousand. And now we're at one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand. Is that due to better route planning, or did something change in terms of the distance from the school that changed that formula of how much we were allowed to be reimbursed?
I know they did change how the routing was. We made a lot more the bus stops centralized. That might be what caused that big difference.
I just wanted to be able to give you a compliment. So I'm just glad, I didn't want to assume, but I think that that's great. I think that's just a testament to the planning. And I'm sure this is a very complicated process to manage all of the routes, all the drivers, all the students, and get them to and from. The other thing that I did notice was, that was the one thing that I had written down after reading through your report, was the discipline issues. And I guess my question is, that's super concerning as both a parent and somebody in this position to make sure that our students are safe and our drivers are safe. What can the board do to help with the situation with these increases in student behavior problems?
Just supporting different training aspects that we find. A lot of the behavior, well, first of all, it may be higher because we're teaching our drivers just not to drive the bus, not say anything, and then they have a bus that's out of control. That's partly why it probably has higher numbers right now. We're trying to teach them to interact with their students more. Once they start doing that, it probably raises the numbers quite a bit.
Okay, so there may have been some that were under-reported in previous years now, okay. Well, that makes a little more sense because they are pretty dramatically different numbers. But, okay.
I do want to highlight the fact, you know, we are transporting twelve-thousand students twice a day. So there are twenty-four-thousand opportunities for something not to go well. And so you take twenty-four-thousand times how many days we've been in school. So these numbers are more than what they've been in the past, without question. But in relation to how many students we have traveling and how many opportunities there are, it's a relatively small number.
And I'm certainly not criticizing our staff in the slightest. I just want to make sure that we're able to support whatever our drivers need and the program needs to help. But I agree, I hear about it all the time because my kids ride the bus, and I know that there's some problems. Not that my kids haven't gotten in trouble before on the bus. You know, it happens. They all do at some point. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Board Member Murdock?
First, Board Member Eslic and Board Member Fritchy would probably recall this, there was a major change in how we routed buses. Was it nineteen-twenty, eighteen-nineteen? Something like that. It was a long thing that we did during the summer where we had to talk about it, and that, I bet, led to a lot of it. Was it 2021? Okay, so that does, there was a change. Now, I don't know about that particular year, but we did do a lot of work with the routing of buses. I do have a more specific question in regards to the incidents on buses, so not to belabor the point. I do like numbers. Hundred-and-eighty-eight incidents reported last year, okay? Two-hundred-and-eighty-eight days of bus suspension, one-point-five essentially per incident, if you want to think of it in those, and understanding that things are obviously different, incidents are different. However, three-hundred-and-sixty-eight incidents this year, one-hundred-and-sixty-four days of bus suspension, point-four-five. But we've had more fights on buses. So my question kind of is, is what is the accountability piece here? Meaning, are we, and I mean, it just has to be a blunt question, are we allowing the behavior without suspending a kid from the bus, giving them multiple chances, whereas before, we weren't going to give multiple chances? Does that make sense? Because if we've had more fights, more problems with peers, and more endangering safety, it would make sense, at least to some degree, that the days of bus suspension would be at least relatively close to what we've had in years past, but we're way below that.
So I want to ask, Bruce will walk you through how bus suspensions happen, but there was a one incident that resulted in, that happened on a bus, that resulted in a very long suspension last year. So one incident counted for a good portion of the days.
We had an outlier.
Yes.
Last year.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And we haven't had that one incident with a giant number of suspensions this year on a bus. Bruce, do you want to, how is the discipline processed? Is it you guys building?
We're working with the buildings more. Some of the fights result in building suspensions. So some of ours are... Some of our suspensions are running parallel with a school suspension at times. We do try to separate it some, but that's almost like a double consequence. So we are trying to watch how we do that.
Okay. So a more collaborative approach with the building is essentially going on at this particular point?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine. And I appreciate it on the outlier. That helps things.
Board Member Sparks?
Just brought it up, just to a point that Board Member Murdock made. While I appreciate to know that we're not just not giving discipline for our students, I just want us to continue to be mindful that, I know when I have had encounters with some of our schools, transportation alone is a reason why some of our kids don't even show up to school. And so I do not want that to be so strenuous to the point, outside of safety and all those other things. But I want us to be cautioned that our goal as a district is to educate our students. And so I appreciate the work that you guys are doing, again, just to making sure that our kids get to school safely.
And the school's been really supportive, and they'll even call us, and we'll work out a plan if we know that student's not going to be able to get to school because of a bus suspension. So we work out some other way of a natural consequence for what has happened.
Great, thank you. And I'll share the thanks as well. Dr. Shelton, I loved what you shared, because you're right, our bus drivers are the very first person that many of our students see from a district standpoint. And to this day, I remember bus driver Bobby and the smile that she had waiting for my boys, and it melts my heart to this day, because that got my kids feeling belonging and happiness and everything about getting on that bus and getting themselves to school for an education. So I just want to say thank you to your team and thank you for all the work, hard work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, no other questions or comments? We'll say thank you, and we will now move on to our written reports, item ten. We have item ten dot zero one, our building level engagement with board priorities. Do we have any comments? Board Member Fritchy, Vice President Fritchy?
Just real quick. First of all, it was Cedar Creek Elementary and Lee Summitt High School this month for those building level engagement and board priorities reports. For Cedar Creek, I don't know if you guys noticed this, but I sure did, because any time somebody puts a cute puppy picture on a report, I mean, do they just do that to get our attention or what? I don't know. But I just kind of was curious, there wasn't any explanation in the report as to what role that little puppy plays at CCE. Is it a therapy dog? Is it just a cute dog? I don't know. But anyway, it's what? It's a therapy dog? So good. That's a very cute puppy. Okay, or dog. It's great to see, also in those pictures, to see that the students are participating in the adaptive special classes, that they're joining their friends on student council or participating in other jobs throughout the school alongside their peers. I think that's really great, anytime you can team the kids up like that, so they get some really valuable experiences on both sides. You know, I think that's awesome. So, good job, Cedar Creek. Lee Summitt High School, one thing I really loved hearing in that report was their new community engagement series topics. If you look through all of those topics that they have lined out for the year, I'm like, oh, wow, if I were a parent there, I would want to go hear some of those topics. And my only curiosity over that is, I wonder how their attendance has improved, has it improved over past experience? They said that when they had PTA-sponsored events and things like that, I'm just wondering if they're getting higher attendance with those topics that they're rolling out at Lee Summitt High. I also really liked their newsletters to the school community twice a month. That's awesome, that they're rolling out some newsletters twice a month. So, anyway, good things happening, so it's great to hear those each month. Thank you.
Great. Board Member Eslic?
Well, I actually just had a couple of observations, but since Dr. Harrison isn't here, I won't phrase them as questions, but just a couple of observations about the Lee Summitt High School report specifically. So first, I just kind of thought it was interesting. I know I was bringing up Capturing Kids' Hearts twice today, but that's just because I wasn't planning on the students talking about it earlier today when we had our work session. But I was kind of surprised when I was reading this report that I didn't really see any integration of that training into, I thought it could, would have fit in how they're increasing academic achievement for students or even part of the professional development for teachers, but I didn't see any of that really highlighted, other than in the parent series, the parent engagement series, where there was a presentation back in September regarding, which was actually put on by Capturing Kids' Hearts for Parents, which is great. Not sure what the feedback was from that, but just, the only reason I bring it up is because it was something that was brought to the board, is something that, you know, we had an emergency meeting essentially to make sure that this got approved and implemented. So I'm just curious what that's looking like. I would have liked to see a little bit of that, I suppose. And then the other thing that I noticed that I thought was interesting was regarding the DEI plan that they put together for their teacher professional development. Dr. Harrison had a link in here, and there was some PD activity listed. And I was just kind of curious going forward if there was going to be a little bit more information, because the only two texts that are really highlighted are two books, one called Waking Up White by Debbie Irvin and White Fragility by D'Angelo and Dyson. And those are great and important resources. I would like to see or wonder if there's the opportunity where teachers are going to have a more diverse discussion about DEI that might consider potentially like religious diversity or other cultural diversities, and how teachers should incorporate those aspects into their professional development. So I just kind of thought maybe that was a little bit one-dimensional, but to be fair, I haven't read either book, so I would love to have that conversation at some point a little bit more thoroughly. But I noticed those things, so I just thought I would bring those up. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll add, I was really excited to see the flyer about the parent engagement series, because we know that, especially around enrollment conferences, and even tonight, when we were looking at the Aeronautic program at STA, how do we get parents engaged as part of that conversation with their student about all the exciting opportunities that are available across our district? And so seeing how closely Lee Summitt High School is watching that, and as engagement went down in people coming to a night, what else can we do to share that information and engage our parents, to partner with their students, I think is a huge plus. So kudos on that, and I was excited to see that. Great. Alright, any other comments around item ten dot zero one? Then we will move to ten dot, oh, then we'll move to ten dot zero two. Any questions or comments on our bond budget update? Written report. Alright. Having said that, then we will move to adjournment, and thank you very much.